Good evening. Notice of the Public Meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session in a regular meeting on Tuesday, February 6, 2018, at 5:10 PM and at 6:00 PM in the Commission Chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building, located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. We will begin with Executive Sessions. Executive Session A, Discussion Pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code regarding property struck off from, to Cameron County for itself and other taxing jurisdictions from a tax resale held on November 7, 2017. Executive Session B, Discussion with Legal Counsel Pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, on a matter regarding threat litigation in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Executive Session C, Consultation with Attorney Pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, regarding a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter, and pursuant to 551.087 regarding economic development negotiations.
Mayor, I move we go into Executive Session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Seeing none, the ayes have it. Ready?
Yes, we will now begin with a regular meeting. If everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the very one which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the city, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercies. And Lord, we thank you for the many opportunities that you trust us with on a regular basis. Lord, we ask you to lead and guide us in each of those opportunities and to handle each with integrity. Help us to make the most of each one of those for our families, for you, Lord, and for the city of Brownsville. Lead and guide each of the Commissioners, Mayor Pro Tem, and everyone that presents today for the best for the city, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Action on items discussed in Executive Session. Action, Executive A, Discussion on possible action on Resolution Numbers 2018-013 through Resolution Number 2018-018, approving or rejecting the bid offers received on the tax resale properties on November 7, 2017.
Order approved. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion passes.
Action on Executive B, action on item as discussed in Executive Session.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to move to proceed as advise in Executive Session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against say nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Next, we have action on Executive Letter C, action on item as discussed in Executive Session.
Mayor Pro Tem, I would like to move to terminate the tax abatements with Tenaska.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against say nay. Seeing none, the ayes have it. Action carries. Mayor's Activity Report. I guess the mayor is...
The mayor's out this evening? Next, we have the Commissioner's Activity Update.
Any updates on behalf of the Commission?
I have one. I have one that I wanted to share with the general public. It's kind of a personal story, but it is a very important one at the least. This last week, I had just gotten home. I had a lot of groceries, about eight bags that I had to get out of the car. I had the kids in the car. And I had just stopped for fast food on the way home, because we all know how when you're a mom with three kids, it's really exhausting to make a trip through the grocery store, right? And so, as I'm walking in the house, I had brought my groceries and a giant watermelon down, and I saw the wonderful bag of waffle fries. And, you know, being a mom of three kids, a lady with two jobs, and a lot of responsibility. I think it was about nine o'clock in the evening, and I had not eaten anything that day. So, I grabbed a waffle fry and I stuck it in my mouth, and I very quickly realized that I was winded from carrying in my groceries and my watermelon and whatnot. So, I took a big gasp of air from my mouth, and I lodged a waffle fry into my throat 100%. And I'm an educated person. I'm a mother of three. I have been elected twice to my seat, once as a writing candidate, the only person ever in Texas. But that is a very good example of how quickly an accident or an incident can happen. And so, I tried, you know, first thing when you cough, or when you feel something stuck, you start coughing, right? And so, that made it worse. I could only exhale out. I could not bring air into my lungs. And so, I started panicking. My two-year-old was on the, you know, was watching me put away groceries, and "Mom, are you okay?" And he started panicking, and my anxiety level started rising. And so, then my 11-year-old comes out when he hears the coughing and sees me crying, and "Mom, what do I do?" You know, I had never taught my kids the importance of CPR. So, then I run to my bedroom. You know, it had already been about a minute of myself just, you know, trying to drink something, trying to clear my throat. And so, I finally get to my bedroom, and my husband was watching TV and just completely just disregarding me because he was into the TV. Thought I was joking when I couldn't talk to him, so I was trying to signal, like, "I'm choking, I'm choking." And he didn't understand, so about another 45 seconds of trying to get him to understand that I needed CPR. I was in need. I was...I could not speak because my windpipe was 100% blocked. At this point, I was crying, and just tears were running out of my eyes uncontrollably because I was making peace with the fact that I was going to die in my bedroom in front of my children because I had never taken a CPR class. My whole life, I've just run, 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 and to the next appointment, to the next child game, and to the next Girl Scout meeting, and to...and I never stopped to learn this very important life-saving skill. So, here I was about to die when I just, I looked at my husband, and I was making peace, just looking at him, letting him know, like, "This is it. I'm gone." And he performed the Heinlich, and sure enough, he cleared my airway on try number five. Yes, I was counting. And I was resuscitated, and I don't think I had much longer to live. I was already blacking out. It's not a peaceful feeling. It is the most agonizing...when somebody suffocates, it's not peaceful. I'll put it to you that way. So, on that note, I wanted to share my story with you. If you have children, if you are somebody's parents, if you have elderly parents, if you are anybody, you need to learn CPR. You need to know these life-saving procedures. Had it been one of my children and my husband wasn't home, what would I have done? So, with that in mind, the next day, I called the Health Department, and the city is putting together this awesome event in June where we will have a free class to anybody and everybody in our community. I know a lot of times it costs $65, $100 to get certified. This is a free class with no cost on it that anybody can come to. And also, Valley Regional, I want to invite you to an event Thursday, February 15, at 5:00 PM, so the day after Valentine's Day. Mark your calendar. It is an absolutely free class, hands-only CPR demonstration, from 5:00 to 7:00 at Valley Regional. They will be giving this CPR class at no cost. You can walk around, you can see the different techniques. It's different for a child, it's different for an infant, it's different for an adult. And let's say you choke at home. I didn't know. I could have saved myself by pushing myself on a chair on my diaphragm. See, I didn't know that, and I would have died on my floor in my home had I known, had I not known that, and had my husband not been home. So, this is very important, and if I ever teach you anything, or if I ever do anything for you, may it be that I tell you that you need these skills, and these classes are free. Please go to them. I will be there. My kids will be there. My family will be there. And I pray that you are never in a situation like what I got myself into in an instant. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We're glad that you're still alive and well.
Thank you.
We miss you.
Thank you.
Any other report?
Commissioner, I'd just like to point out the fact that we've been having a lot of accidents, and a lot of people have been complaining about police officers being out and actually enforcing the law a little bit harder than they usually should. But every day, you see, especially on social media, you see of all these accidents that are going on. You know, please remember when you leave your home to put on your safety belt. Please remember to remind your children, because a lot of these accidents that we're having are children, in my opinion, that haven't gone through a driver's ed course. They don't understand traffic law. And you see it. The cellphone is the deadliest thing you can have in your hand when you're driving around, you know, and we're having just too many accidents. You know, on one day, we had 54 recorded accidents in the city alone in one day. What were they attributed to? Some of it was the weather, but the majority of it was that people were not concentrating on what they're doing when they're driving. So, please, police officers will be out enforcing the law harder, you know, so please, please, you know, follow the law when you go out, when you leave your homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. What do you...seeing none?
Next, we have Proclamations. The Historic Brownsville Aviation Month. Please come forward.
Welcome. So, this next proclamation is in honor, declaring the month of February 2018 to Historic Brownsville Aviation Month. As you know, our Brownsville Airport, a ribbon was cut by Amelia Earhart. She was a big fan of the Brownsville International Airport. I personally believe that it should be the Brownsville Amelia Earhart Airport, but that's another story. So, I'll go ahead and read this proclamation in honor of the history of our beautiful airport. Whereas on March 9, 1929, the Brownsville International Airport was formally dedicated as celebration noted by many as an outstanding achievement in international event, and an international event of great significance. Whereas, an estimated 20,000 individuals gathered for the commemorate, to commemorate the airport's opening and the very first load of air mail from Mexico City to Brownsville. It was on this historic day that Charles Lindbergh arrived in Brownsville after a flight of 5 hours and 38 minutes, carrying 500 pounds of mail. He was greeted by fellow aviators, Captain Ira Ecker, Captain Frank Hawkes, Ms. Amelia Earhart, and Colonel W.T. Johnson. Whereas, the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport has demonstrated robust growth in both domestic and international sectors, with the total number of passengers arriving and departing growing by 30% over the past 15 years and forecasted to grow another 30% over the next 15 years and 80% by 2032. Whereas aviation plays a critical role in Brownsville's economy, citizens, business, industries, government agencies depend on aviation, often as a primary mode of transportation for travel, medical services, shipments of goods, and tourism. Whereas, with over a century of unique history dating back to 1913, Brownsville Aviation has in the past and present and will in the future play a virtual role in serving the transportation needs of the United States and to the world. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by the virtue of authority vested in the Charter of said city on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby declare the month of February 2018 as Historic Brownsville Aviation Month, and further encourage all of the citizens of Brownsville to celebrate aviation as a unique resource in our community, and always remember to fly Brownsville. Done on this sixth day, February 2018. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am, for your hard work.
Thank you for your dedication to our airport. Thank you.
Congratulations.
And I didn't choke.
Just a couple of quick words.
Sure.
Of course, on behalf of Airport Board, as well as the Airport Staff, we thank you for taking the opportunity to honor this month as an aviation month or historic aviation month. A little bias in aviation, so I kind of take pride in that. In addition, as you talked about, we look forward to your leadership as well as your support as we move on to the next step in the development and construction of the new terminals. So, again, on behalf of the Airport Board, as well as our staff, we appreciate the proclamation for the Historic Aviation Month in February. Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work. Thank you, sir.
Next, we have the Presentations. Employee of the Month, Mr. Victor Hugo Cisneros, Lead Equipment Operator 3.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, City Commission. My name is Martino Trevino, Assistant Director of Public Works. It is with great honor to, for me to present the Employee of the Month for January 2018, Mr. Victor Hugo Cisneros. Mr. Cisneros was hired in 1995, starting out working for our Brownsville PVB patching crew, and would also assist in the installation of traffic speed humps. During his tenure as a city employee, he has worked his way up to Lead Equipment Operator 3. His position is responsible for keeping asphalt paving operations safely running. Mr. Cisneros is very reliable when it comes to attendance and punctuality. He's also detail-oriented. He understands the entire paving operation and understands the paving machine itself, which is a science to many people. It's many moving parts, many components, and he understands them all. The department is very fortunate and grateful to have an employee like Mr. Cisneros on its staff. He, this gentleman has defied the father time. He doesn't look his age. I always joke around with him about it, but I've never seen a harder-working employee. So, as Employee of the Month, Mr. Cisneros receives a wristwatch, an engraved plaque, and a label pin. One paid day off of his choice. He'll be featured on Brownsville TV and the city website. He also becomes eligible to be selected as Employee of the Year at our annual Employee Banquet in December 2018.
The floor is yours, Mr. Cisneros.
Thank you for your commitment to our city.
Yes. It's a very special...
Gracias.
Le doy gracias al Public Works de estar trabajando en la ciudad, y pues echamos ganas a todo para seguir adelante, que haya producción, sobre todo calidad, y pues es lo que debemos de hacer todos unidos, compañeros, todos los que me ayudan, les doy las gracias también porque somos un equipo. Si en ellos, los compañeros, a lo mejor no estuviera aquí tampoco. Solo que les doy gracias a todos. Sobre todo a los supervisores, a Martino, a Mister Torres, Navarro. Gracias.
Next, we have the Grants Annual One-Year Work Plan.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and City Commissioners. We are here tonight to present to you the Grants Division One-Year Work Plan for 2018, and awards and highlights for the fiscal year 2017. Here with me tonight is Sylvia Ordeman, Grant Manager, Athena Burnakis, Grant Writer, and Andres Perales, Grant Analyst. Together, we will be providing you the annual update on the progress made by Office of Grant Management and Community Development and the City of Brownsville, and will be presenting the work plan, grants submitted and awarded, highlights of some of the awards, and further description of department services. Our department, known as OGMCD, vision is to transform and empower the lives of Brownsville residents. We ensure that our services are aligned with our vision, mission, and also with the City of Brownsville's core values. Our department is made up of two divisions, the Community Development Division and also the Grants Division. And within the Community Development Division, we are responsible for administering U.S. housing and urban development funds for the City of Brownsville. The three programs the city receives allocations for our Community Development Block Grant, the Emergency Solutions Grant, and also the Home Grant. On a yearly basis, the Community Development Team comes before you, which is usually during the summer, to present for your consideration and approval the one-year action plan, which lays out all the actions and resources that are tied to the HUD programs. Within the Grants Division, we focus on identifying, securing, and managing grant funding from a variety of resources, which includes federal, state, local, foundation, and other private opportunities. We work with our city's leadership, city departments, being the subject matter experts, nonprofits, organizations, and other partners to secure funding. They are all instrumental in the process. So, at this time, now I'm going to invite Sylvia to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. So, presented in this slide is the 2018 Grants Work Plan. Throughout each quarter, the Grants Division will align its efforts to pursue funding by applying for grant opportunities that target a variety of sectors. The sectors are listed in green. The work plan is divided by quarters to allow for any variability in grant opportunities or deadlines. To date, during the first quarter of 2018, the Grants Division has already submitted grant opportunities that will service environmental, public safety, parks and recreation, and capital infrastructure needs. The Grants Work Plan outlines this year's efforts, but it can be subject to change depending on the immediate needs of the city or the community. Using the same sectors outlined in the Grants Work Plan, we have created charts that showcase the percentage of grants submitted and awarded by fiscal year. This graph shows that between October 2016 through September 2017, grants were submitted to address all sectors of the work plan. A total of 32 grant applications were submitted throughout this time. Community development, public safety, and capacity building are some of the highest-represented This chart highlights the sectors that benefited from grants awarded between the timeframe. All sectors benefited from at least one awarded grant during this time. When comparing the percentages of grants submitted versus grants awarded, the percentages remain very consistent, with only a slight variation of 1% to 2%. A total of 20 grant applications were awarded within this time. The City of Brownsville received a grant award total of more than $896,000 in grant funding and technical assistance. Notable grant awards include over $277,000 from the Texas Parks and Wildlife Agency, and technical assistance for Zika field support from the Centers for Disease Control. So, now I'd like to introduce Ms. Athena Burnakis.
So, the following will be a few highlights of the year. Through a partnership with the Border Environment and Corporation Commission and the Environmental Protection Agency, the City of Brownsville was able to host a Train the Trainer Zika Prevention and Awareness Workshop through the award of $20,000 from the Vector Habitat Education and Outreach Grant. The project's main focus was on the prevention of the further spread of mosquito-borne diseases by teaching the trainer, expanding mosquito surveillance activity in Brownsville, and establishing an application to facilitate reporting of illegal dumping of mosquito concerns. The Train the Trainer Workshop took place on Thursday, September 21 of 2017, at the Ringled Civic Pavilion, where the new crowdsourcing app was introduced to the public. More than 12 organizations were invited with the capacity to hold 100 participants. The Health Department prepares regular reports, and the app has proven to be useful for data collection and mosquito disease awareness and prevention. The Riverside Park redevelopment for the replacement and repair of the new park amenities was a grant award of $189,193 from the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation, with a match of $51,328 from the City of Brownsville Parks and Recreation Department from a Texas Recreation and Park Service grant. The process of ordering the exercise equipment, surfacing for the trail, drinking fountain, and other amenities has begun. The playground has been received, and we are awaiting a quote for installation. Once procurement is complete, the installation process should go quickly. The Parks and Recreation Department will showcase the completed project with a ribbon-cutting ceremony to demonstrate the quality of life and health improvements are a top priority within our community. The Brownsville Police Department was awarded $3,308.37 for tactical firearm training equipment, two AR-10 rifles, useful in confined spaces, which will enhance the marksman's capabilities, and one AR-15 carbine rifle, which will be used for entry work for building searches. The Grants Team regularly meets with the Brownsville Police Department to assist them with their varying needs and to help facilitate different grant opportunities. Brownsville is one of six communities across the nation selected to receive technical assistance with sustainable design strategies to the EPA under its Greening America's Communities Program. Through this program, the EPA has assisted Brownsville in using green infrastructure and other environmentally-friendly designs from the International Boulevard border between I-69 and the Gateway International Bridge, and promoting a more walkable, likable, and vibrant neighborhood. This process has reinforced the importance of International Boulevard and the potential this street has to transform the surrounding area by being more walkable, bicycle-friendly, visually attractive, and environmentally friendly. Ms. Andres Perales?
We have submitted the following eight grants between October 2017 and January 2018, based on the types of funding needs our city has experienced. We found these grant opportunities. We applied to the Small Community Air Service Development Program, which is federal funding that helps small communities improve air service through marketing and promotion of enhanced utilization of airport facilities. The Brownsville South Padre International Airport, along with the City of Brownsville, sought this grant to help design and implement a promotional campaign to support additional frequency at Brownsville South Padre International Airport. We also applied to the U.S. HUD Choice Neighborhood Implementation Grant, which is a federal funding that supports comprehensive neighborhood transformation efforts and provides resources for public assets. The Housing Authority of the City of Brownsville, as lead applicant, the City of Brownsville, and the Community Development Corporation of Brownsville sought this award to support the revitalization of Buena Vida. We anticipate submitting many other grant applications throughout the coming months. Some upcoming grant opportunities we'll be working on in this coming weeks include the We will apply to the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council Homeland Security Grant, which provides state funding to build law enforcement capabilities to prevent terrorist attacks and provide law enforcement with resources to support critical prevention and protection activities. This opportunity is being sought by Brownsville Police Department, the Brownsville Fire Department, and the Office of Emergency Management to help them prepare for multiple homeland security We are also applying to the Local Border Security Grant, which provides funding to sustain inter-agency law enforcement operations and enhance local enforcement patrols. These efforts are intended to decrease flow of drugs across the border and deter the growth of gangs and other criminal organizations. The Office of Grant Management provides services to the municipality, nonprofits, and other community-based organizations. Our fundamental purpose is to facilitate the necessary processes within departments to apply for opportunities and find funding for city projects and programs to improve the quality of life in the City of Brownsville. And now, thank you for your leadership and your interest in our department. I'll be invited... I'll be inviting Ms. Delazie back to the podium if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, team. So that concludes our presentation, and we're available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Delazie.
Mayor Protem and Commissioners, I'd like to add that as this Office of Grant Management progresses, is we're finding that the grants are kind of drying up a little bit, and we're moving towards the loans, which seem more competitive now. So that's the new focus we have as well. And then additionally, as I mentioned before, we're looking at that public-private partnerships. So you see a lot more activity through this Grants Department on the traditional grant application, but now it's chasing, okay, let's look at how the loans maybe are a little bit best matched than they are the previous time because of the atmosphere is out there for grants.
Yes, that's correct. Yes, because of the atmosphere administrations, there's the change in focus and shift, and a more focus on private investment and working with private partners.
Thank you, Ms. Delazie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have arboviral mosquito update.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. I'm sorry. Honorable Mayor Protem and Commissioners, good evening. Let me begin by introducing my team, Dr. John Wells, our Health Authority, and fellow coworker and nurse from many years ago, Henry Presses, who is one of our CDC assignees for Zika outreach. And it's important to note that working collaboratively in a very complicated response that Zika has been, has been instrumental. One of the things that Zika has done to many health departments nationally is it's made teams work across sectors where before, perhaps they weren't working across those sectors. The CDC Director has claimed this to be one of the most complicated responses they have ever had, and most recently, the Health Director in Houston expressed similar sentiments. So what is the impact that Zika has had in Brownsville? Number one, in 2017, we were able to get a lot of research done in Brownsville from our activities to be able to get the City of Brownsville removed from the yellow cautionary zone that had been set up by the CDC. That was a big first step that we did. And additionally, additionally, I want to add that when you compare Brownsville to many other of our cities in the valley, Brownsville's composed out of 146 square miles. When you compare the next largest city, McAllen, of 46 square miles. So right from the beginning, there is a big challenge in trying to get all that geography covered and surveillance. Now, the data on Zika is still changing every day. For example, we just learned recently that congenital birth defects for people who live in Zika-borne areas are a 20-fold increase at risk just by the factor of having localized Zika. This data came out the last week of January. Currently, so the next obvious question is how many people in Brownsville potentially could be born with congenital birth defects of Zika? That is an interesting question, because even with CDC and having an outreach nurse, that is one of the gaps in HIPAA rules nationally that we have. I can tell you that we at least have one, and that's, I don't violate any HIPAA rules, is that we at least have one baby in Brownsville that was born with congenital birth defects. Why is this important? It's important because Brownsville is the tip of the spear, and the data that we're collecting here in 2017, thanks to your support from management and the City Commission, is we're protecting not only our citizens, but we're the first line of defense, protecting those who enter the border either from coming north or coming in from the south. And why is this important? Because if you look from our office at City Plaza, and you take a radius of 10 miles, you will see that 10 miles from downtown Brownsville, we have a population of 1.3 million people. A lot happens when you have 1.3 million people, especially when we can only tell the half of the story, because the southern half is, of course, northern Mexico, and it's difficult for us to be able to tell that story. However, one of the recent advances that we've done in 2017 is what would have historically been a blindfold, is we've been able to reach out with Mexico and get an idea of what it is that's happening in Mexico. And this is really important, because Zika is at our doorsteps. Tamalipas has had the highest increase of Zika in Mexico in 2017, 636 cases, the most. Two weeks ago, we were on a call, and Mexico has really taken some aggressive steps with a new program called RED Tamalipeca, which was enacted on January 23rd, 2018. Why is this important? Because we are having conversations, crucial conversations, with our counterparts in Mexico at their state level, at the local level with Matamoros, and even at the federal level, so that as we move forward, we have an idea of what we can expect to see in Brownsville. Why is that important? Because we already have a track record of having the mosquito that carries Zika in Brownsville. We have 39 different species of mosquito in Brownsville, but the one that matters the most to us is the 80s species. So everywhere you see a star here, the bigger the star, the more cases, not the more cases, the more mosquitoes that were caught within those traps. So seasonally, we are no different. As the summer ramps up, we see the increases of mosquito population that you would see in other communities. What is different is that if you were to look at September, August, late August, if you see the numbers, August and September, it seems to show that they increased. They did, but please keep in mind that during that period, we had asked the state for assistance, and we got $800,000 worth of in-kind assistance in 2017 from the state. The state came in and helped us with a new, novel technology called Buffalo Turbine, which is able to cover a total of 27,795 acres. That's the equivalent of 43.43 square miles, roughly about 15% of the city. Why is that important? Because as you look at our mosquito population, even with that help, we continue to have some gaps, and it's important that as we move into the future, we identify the gaps so that we can be in a position to tell our story and be able to decrease. State funding, we did get some, not directly to Brownsville, but it came to Cameron County, and Cameron County did ransom support in 2017 in the form of door-to-door campaign and in the form of some UOL machines that assisted us in conducting some activities. So it's important to support even our county health department and the Brownsville Health Department, and for us to be able to have the equipment that we need. So when we think of vector control, we normally just think of the machine that goes out and sprays. Well, that's not the only thing that occurs in Brownsville. In 2017, we used the Clark Buffalo. We had the mosquito traps that tell us and the city where we need to conduct surveillance, where we need to go. We also take the call center calls very seriously, and we also are working with the EPA and Brownsville PUB on a novel program called Buffalo Site Guard for a new type of trap that's being used in the Houston area. We also did a lot of door-to-door campaigns through the additional funding that we had. Why is this important? Because we were able to have the Train the Trainer Day that was just mentioned by the Grants Department and the CDC, through Henry and the CDC through the county liaison, was able to put Zika Action Day. They were able to, we were able to bring people from throughout the nation, health experts, to talk about what was going on in Brownsville and the important steps that needed to occur. The app was unveiled at the Train the Trainer Day, and that is now an app that is being looked at in other communities moving forward. In addition, probably the most important part of this is that Brownsville's on the radar nationally, not necessarily because of Zika. We're in the radar because we're now adopting some best practices. The Harvard study, a case study polled experiences with Zika virus among Brownsville residents in July, was very enlightening for residents because of 562 residents that were polled, the local reaction was people living in Brownsville were more concerned about Zika virus than the general public, which makes sense. But when you stop to think that people in Brownsville were taking the steps that needed to be taken to decrease the incidence of Zika, and that we found out that the most vulnerable people in Brownsville are the ones that we normally think they are, and that's the older people and the youngest populations in our city. Most people in Brownsville stated to this Harvard study that they were real happy with a public health response in our city, and that they wanted to continue to receiving this information. Local television and online resources were just part of the information we did. People do want knowledge on the issue, and we are working hard to provide that in their native language, whether it be Spanish or English. And we know that Zika is not only a mosquito-borne, we know that it's an STD, and that's a big part of the story that we get to tell when we're talking about this. Why is this important? Because in 2017, we finally are starting to get a clearer picture of what parts of Brownsville are highest at risk. We have a good index of where we need to be, so that we can try and avoid future potential outbreaks by the data that's coming to us. If you look at this map, we have broken it down by green, yellow, and red to indicate areas where we think the incidence of potential Zika infection will be low, based on a combination of mosquitoes, mosquito traps, mosquito species, and past cases of the disease, and the calls that come in from our call center. Some recent developments, Mexico, as I said, is part of, Matamoros is part of this RED Tamalipeca, which they are enacting, and then NatureCom has just found out that Zika virus, in salivary glands of five different species of mosquitoes in Mexico, that, in another word, Zika is present in mosquitoes in Mexico in the wild. So it's no longer a seasonal thing. We know that it's a matter of time before we start to see this trending northward. That is why I'm here tonight to know what are the factors that are influencing our health issues. We've had, this is just a small example of what we had to deal this year. We had legal factors, we had ethical factors, we had financial factors. The city stepped up to the plate every time, producing the funding that we needed to get Zika covered. And then the marketing factors, the working through political, through two countries and creating one outreach program, which was big. Not every community in the U.S. can say that they had one outreach campaign going on. Some of the gaps, as anything is, we really recognize that we need some really specialized help, such as entomologists, an epidemiologist, nurse, to be able to validate the activities that we're doing, and so that we are able to enhance, go back to our grant writers and give them the data that they need, so that we can have some successful grants. And then we do need to continue our ongoing public education door-to-door campaign, because according to the Harvard study, that is really where true engagement occurs, at the community level. And where do we go in the future? We take the data that we've collected, and we continue to tell our story, and we continue to make partners such as the University of TRGV, the State Health Department, and the CDC for continued resources and funding. And we continue to enhance the scope of the Health Department to work in epidemiology surveillance and potentially vaccinations in the future, so that we can make sure that our population is safe. Thank you.
I have one quick question. So let's say spring is coming around, and the rain and all of that. Let's say one day, or let's just say like next week, I go outside, and I have a ton of mosquitoes, and they look like the kind that carries Zika. What can I do? I call the hotline, and I report it, and... Go ahead.
So what a difference a year makes. This year, you have many options. You can go and download our app, you can use the 546 help. You can also go into the call center, there's, I'm trying to think of the different routes, the call center call line or the call center app and report it, and our staff has been able to now use a different WebQA format now that we're able to get out there pretty quick.
Awesome. Thank you. Just so the public knows. And that's the 546 helpline, right?
Yes, 546 help.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, let me ask you, do these mosquitoes, are they bred locally, or are there migration patterns?
So from what we're seeing and what's been told to us, is most mosquitoes don't, especially the species, the 80s Jipti...
This one specifically?
They are very backyard dwellers. A nickname that we've adopted for them is pet mosquitoes, because they actually prefer the indoors, where the temperature is pretty much at 70 degrees year-round and inside your household. You tend to have a dog or a plant, and that keeps the water environment...
Now, what's the life expectancy of that particular breed?
So these mosquitoes can live up to two weeks.
Now, let me ask you, we had a heart freeze, which we haven't had in many years in Brownsville. We have one or two hours, but more than two hours of heart freeze. Does that kill off these mosquitoes?
Yes, sir. In fact, December...
Well, they're saying no, and you're saying yes, so...
Let me answer your question. A heart freeze below 40 degrees will kill. The longer we remain below 40 degrees, the more impact. If we're hanging around for a very short period of time, you're still going to have some mosquitoes. But keep in mind that as soon as the temperature comes up, the mosquitoes that were buried in the soil will become alive. So it's not going to kill future mosquitoes, it's going to kill what was alive at that time.
And let me ask you, in the food chain, what does this mosquito actually do? What is its purpose or its point in the food chain? And the question at the end would be, well, why don't you mutate them, so they're not replicating if it's been a year?
So that's a good question, because in one of our things that I had to trim my presentation down...
And I know this is, I probably weigh, I mean, probably this is the doc, this is probably, a doctor can probably answer that, but we've done it with other species.
Mosquitoes are primarily blood feeders. That's how they trigger their birth, their life cycle. If that cycle continues, keep in mind mosquitoes also bite horses and dogs and other things. But specifically, in this case, is we need to break that cycle, we need to break that chain. And how we're doing it right now is through the surveillance, because every time that a trap pops up with higher than 10 mosquitoes, it triggers us to go into that area and break that chain, so that that chain continues to be lower and lower with every next cycle of mosquito activity.
So, go ahead, Doctor.
And that was one of the important things about this Buffalo treatment that we use here. It was a larva side. To bake, first, the cold weather will cure the adult, then we want to kill the larvae itself, so it doesn't duplicate itself. So that was a point of the larva side. That reduced our numbers, and it made a significant difference in our outcome here this year. And that's why the resources and the collaboration with all, with the CDC, EPA, the state, and the Cameron County has helped us control these mosquitoes.
Now, Doctor, let me ask you, from our perspective, how can we help you and Art actually combat this? What is, I mean, I know Arts come, we give money for spraying, but what can we do to actually break that cycle? How can we help you?
Art had a little chart here a minute ago, and showed basically what we need is personnel. We need an epidemiologist, we need an entomologist, somebody who specializes in mosquitoes and bugs. And that way, they can collect the data, collect the specimens themselves, and then give us the information of what we really have here. What we're depending on now, that's why we're such a collaborative effort here in the past year, because we needed EPA to come in, we needed CDC to come in, we needed all these other factors to come in to help us find out what we really have available, where they're located, and then how to eradicate them. So that's why this has been such a collaborative effort. Over the last 20 years in the Health Department, we've seen anthrax, we've seen H1N1, but we've never seen a collaborative effort like we've seen here today, well, sorry, in the last year. And Art and his department, they need to get kudos, because his crew has worked very hard, and an extended amount of overtime, and equipment, and perseverance, and some of the most unfavorable weather to keep these mosquitoes under control.
So I guess probably the next step would be to actually hire an epidemiologist?
Epidemiologist.
So those are the gaps that we feel need to be, so that we can work at a higher level. Any questions?
And one last question, Art. How many people have used your Zika app?
So we work real closely with MIS on that, and they are actually taking those numbers and importing them straight into the WebQA app. So we have not been looking at the app, we've been looking at the numbers that are not coming in through the WebQA.
Well, thank you. Thank you for everything you've done. Thank you for the collaboration. It takes a team, so we want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts, on behalf of all our citizens. I think a lot of people don't understand the severity of what could happen if we have an epidemic, we have an outbreak. And I think there was a slide about eight or nine slides back that basically said, you can't afford an epidemic, but you can also afford to stop an epidemic, or something like that, where it talks about the financial burdens.
And let me end it on this note. This work is so important that Henry and I will be up in Austin tomorrow talking to the Health Commissioner. And this has helped to establish dialogue on other issues like the diabetes rates, the hypertension rates, the obesity rates in our area, because they all actually do play a role when you're talking about people that are at risk of getting this disease. So we're carrying the conversation in other ways beyond the scope of the mosquito and Zika. Zika and STDs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I laughed at your really hard question.
Next, we have consent agenda items, A through L.
Would you approve?
Second, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Seeing none, the ayes have it. Consent item agenda passes.
Next, we have public hearings, public hearing number six, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 2018-736-P, amending Chapter 98 Traffic and Vehicles, Article 5, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Section 98, 162, in comment of standment, standing, or parked vehicles by adding subsection 11 addressing vehicles lacking registration identification.
Commissioners, Mayor Pro Tem, this is simply an amendment to our existing parking ordinance, which authorizes the towing of vehicles which meet certain criteria. As I understand, this was drafted as a means of addressing commercial vehicles meant to be sold, which are parking on residential streets, and prohibiting residents in the area from parking in front of their houses and creating a problem there. So we added a subsection 11, which seems to apply to vehicles meeting that criteria. They typically lack the display of current registration and inspection. When they're parked upon a public street or alley, they're subject to towing. Of course, any of the provisions that follow, the hearing, ability to prove that, well, the ability to retain them if they need to. I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add, Commissioner?
So once this passes, if somebody has, because I get a lot of calls about this, a lot of people, they buy cars and bulk to tow them somewhere or to sell them somewhere, and they'll leave them in public property.
Correct.
So once this passes, and we have a resident that has somebody parking outside of their house, and the sticker is not current, et cetera, now they can call PD and have the vehicle towed, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And if I may add, Commissioner, to bootstrap on that comment, that is usually the call that we get. And so they're pass-through cars, so they're bought in auction. Even the title says that for export only. The issue is, they don't want to pay parking fees, so they just leave them all around downtown. And then when there's certain movements on, with our Mexican counterparts at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, they're all gone, or that's when they're actually crossed into Mexico. They don't have license plates, they don't have registration stickers. We frankly don't even know who they belong to. We don't know what they're carrying, or who they belong to. So this is a method, so we can actually have cars that are illegally in the street, we can actually have the police department enforce and just remove these cars. It's narrowly tailored, so it's specifically for cars that don't have any registration. Because, let's say you and I get a flat on the expressway, we don't, and we have to leave our car there for a couple of hours, we don't want it towed, but you have a license plate, you have a registration tag, so police department can identify who you are on the moment if you have insurance. These cars, we don't know where they're coming from, where they're going, what they have inside, or who they belong to. So I think it became a public nuisance at this point. So people can still go claim these cars, but they will have to actually say, you know, why they're not leaving them parking lots. So it's to address a very tailored public nuisance that we're encountering downtown.
It's a very powerful tool for our constituents that have these vehicles being parked outside of their homes. So on that note, I will make the motion to approve?
Oh, it's a motion...
Oh, public hearing, I'm sorry.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here on behalf of this action item number six?
Close.
So on that note, second?
There's a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Seeing none, action item six carries.
The action item, please.
Motion to approve? Do we have a second to approve?
Second.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Seeing none, the action carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have public hearing number seven, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-076, to rezone from apartment G to apartment H for lot number three, block 166-8, Stillman's Extension to the City of Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas, located at 925 West Elizabeth Street.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. This first case is, has been appealed. It was denied unanimously by the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 4th of 2018. Because it is an appeal case, it does require a 3/4 majority vote to overrule the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that is through the Local Government Code, Section 211.006. So this property is 0.1377 acres. It's fronting West Elizabeth. This property and across West Elizabeth here, you can see is currently zoned apartment G. Here, for a point of reference, here is Elizabeth, here is where Central breaks off and heads north. This is part of the downtown Riverside District. This district should be a balance of residential, community facilities and commercial, with some institutional land uses. Residential uses should have an average density of 12 dwelling units per acre, and should consist of single-family dwellings, duplexes, triplexes, row houses, and some apartment Here is an aerial of the property. As you can see, to the north, south, east, and west are single-family dwellings. Also, to the north and to the west, along Elizabeth, you will find apartments. To the west, I'm sorry, to the east and to the south are also commercial businesses, and there is a church to the south. And again, this is West Elizabeth, and right over here is Central. This is the 200-foot radius map that we, showing all the properties that's within 200 feet that did receive public notice. They received a public notice for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and a second notice when the applicant appealed this case. There were 25 mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. Also, no citizen spoke against it at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Just to point out, Commissioners, since this was not favorably approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, our ordinances state that it will not be overruled unless five city commission members vote to do so. So it would have to be unanimous.
So nobody had opposition in the neighborhood? Get to P and Z. What was P and Z's reasoning for not wanting to approve it?
The density for the area. It's currently zoned apartments, so they are allowed to put in apartments. However, the area district is restricting to 12.5 units per acre. This lot, which is a typical downtown lot, is 0.1377 acres, I believe, which is about 6,000 square feet.
And if I may, Commissioner, you know, the main reason this is happening is because if they want to build one on top of the other, we hit them with our fire code, and then people have to pay like $20,000. So it's our own fault, and I don't understand why P and Z is denying these when it's, they should be addressing what's going on with the fire code and allowing people to actually develop their apartments.
Chief, can we meet up?
But, as far as the planning department, they're good with the planning department, right? It's consistent, it says with their plan. And there's no opposition from the neighborhood either.
Correct.
So it's just the planning is only based on density. So there's, it's a triplex versus the duplex.
Correct. So it's one additional...
So, how many, yeah, how many extra people is that? Is it a one-bedroom, or are they two-bedrooms, or?
It's a rezoning case, not a specific use, so they're not required to supply a site plan.
But our planning department is okay with it, correct?
As far as planning goes, they will have to go through the permit process to make sure they meet all requirements, including landscaping, fire code, building code, when they apply for a building permit.
It's consistent with the usage, and there's no opposition from the neighborhood, though.
Correct.
Want to close the public hearing?
Is there a second?
I believe there is a representative here.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. My name's Renee Sanchez, I'm here on behalf of the property owner. I was going to walk you through a lot of that, but I think I'm just going to hit on some of your questions and the points. And you know what, let me start by giving you a packet, which has some additional exhibits that might be helpful in your determination.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So, would it take all of us here to vote? Five?
Yes, it would. All of you to vote affirmatively.
So I want to start by addressing the diagram that was previously presented, wherein it showed that there were several single-family dwellings all around. If you will look at page six of your exhibit, you'll actually see that right across from the subject property, there is an eight-unit multifamily. Right next to that, there's a four-unit multifamily. And then on the other side of Brown Street, there's a three-unit multifamily. In addition, on the exact block that our property is on, at the very end, there's a two-story apartment complex with seven units. And right next to our property, there's a single-story residential, and then it's got an apartment in the back. So there really are apartments all around here. And the findings in the staff report were that we are in compliance with the use, we're in compliance with the comprehensive plan, the future use plan, the surrounding area. I mean, really, we're in the right area to be doing this type of thing. And I believe a question was posed, is what are the bedrooms that are going, the number of bedrooms there? This is going to be a triplex, hopefully. And if you look at page 18, it's going, there are going to be two bedrooms each. So really, it's just an additional two, maybe three people, depending on the family. And some of the issues we had in trying to address this hearing were the fact that we weren't really given a reason as to why this wasn't in compliance, why this wasn't being passed. You know, from everything that we've looked at, we're within the legal specifications, you know, we're in compliance with the general use of the area, and there's really no legal justification for denying this. Right now, we're zoned as, we are currently zoned as a Zone G, which allows for 12.5 units per acre. Based on our acreage, that would only give us 1.7 units, so a single-family. And we're asking to be rezoned to Zone H, which allows 25 units per acre. But clearly, we're not going to do 25 units, we don't want to do anywhere near that, we just want the three units. Are there any questions that I can answer at this point? You know, we're just a little lost as to why this was denied in the first place. The letter that we received from the zoning commission didn't give any type of explanation. It's clear to us that this fits the surrounding area, there's multifamily properties across the street, right next door, all over the place. So it seems to us that this really should be approved.
So, your client only wants to build a triplex, when next to it, there's like six or seven apartments?
Correct. So it fits within the specifications.
Yeah. And it's a very nice drawing, too.
And hopefully, the newer build, the more modern facade will help to bring up the property values. There are some pictures of some of the other apartments across the street. I think that a new build would be good for this area. It also is in the historical district. They have already gone before the Historical Preservation Board. Everything's been unanimously agreed to, they've changed the different looks to help fit with the historical perspective. So everybody seems to be on board, if we can just get this one thing passed. Were there any other questions I can help answer?
Is there a motion to close out of the comment? Anybody else?
Excuse me, I would just like to note that this site has not received a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Designer Review Board. It cannot receive that until they've already applied for a building permit. It is one of the steps involved in that. I believe they actually went as a presentation item a few weeks ago before the zoning case, but it has not received a certificate of appropriateness.
Let me ask you, who can override the Historic Preservation vote?
It cannot be overruled. If a case is denied by the Historic Preservation Designer Review Board, they may appeal it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. If the Planning and Zoning Commission denies it, they may appeal it here to City Commission.
But you can tell the Planning and Zoning Commission that it was approved, right? And just save, save five steps.
Well, if there's a fee, I mean, in essence, in essence, it's a committee, but in essence, you know, I don't want to be hurting the taxpayer either, by having to pay a fee after fee after fee, you know, like these folks do every single time.
What reason would there be for the Historical Preservation Commission or Committee to deny it? Yeah, what grounds would there be?
I'm not sure about that. You would have to talk to our partners, we can do that later.
It would come down to windowsills, the facades, you know, those types of things. You'd be surprised, it's...
Is there an overlay? Is this an overlay district?
Yes, this is within the overlay district.
I was actually on the Historical Preservation Board, so what we look at, or what I used to look at, was basically they're entitled to have discretion as to the outside facade, windows, doors, siding, roofing, to make sure that it fits within the historical guidelines. My client's already been before them and reworked his plan so that it fits within their guidelines. Now, clearly, and from my understanding, the board, the Historic Preservation Board is really more of an advisory board, because they can be overruled, but I'm not sure if that's entirely still true.
The problem that I have, that we have clients like yours, that want to invest in our downtown area, and we're in great need of revitalization, and they have to jump through hoops like this. And that, to me, is a really big turnoff. It needs to be addressed on the city side with our codes and whatnot, because I hate to see this happen. That's just my two cents.
I'd also just like to add that at this point, there's no fee for a certificate of appropriateness, or for any of the appeals.
It still wears you down.
We need to make it user-friendly.
So are we moving to close the public hearing?
Is there a motion to close public comment?
Mayor Pro Tem, I want to close.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to approve?
Second.
To, not to approve the planning and zoning, to grant the appeal...
Motion to approve the rezon.
Motion to approve? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
A motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Seeing none, the motion carries.
And Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners just like to add that they're all advisory groups. You, as commissions, appoint these commissions, and if you're to set your will on how you would like them to make it, the process go a little bit expedited. So if any direction we can get, we can help with that.
Next, we have public hearing number eight, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-077-S, to allow apartments and apartment use in dwelling G for lot number 10, block 6, Ridgeline Terrace, Section 1, located at 1491 North Ridge Drive.
This case was also denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 4th, so it also requires the unanimous vote here tonight. So this is a 0.34-acre property that is Zone Dwelling G. They are asking for a specific use permit to allow a four-unit apartment. As you can see, it's part of a neighborhood that's currently zoned dwelling G continuously. It is just north of Alton Door, right here. As you see in an area map in a moment, this currently has an apartment complex, and this land is vacant. Here is a future land use map. It is part of the Transition Central District and the Town Corridor. The Transition Central District is comprised of mostly residential land use with a mix of others. The residential land use should be mostly single-family with an average density of two dwellings per acre. The Town Corridor is also primarily residential, with small clusters of commercial land uses. The residential uses should have an average density of three dwellings per acre, and be mostly single-family dwellings. Here is the aerial. This is near the intersection of Paredes and Alton Door. Paredes is running right over here. The property is currently vacant, and to the north, east, and west, there are single-family dwellings, also duplexes and commercial businesses to the south, as well as a civic institution. Here is the 200-foot radius map, where public notices were mailed out. Again, they were mailed out for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in January, and a new notice was issued for the appeal tonight. Here is the specific use site plan. As you can see, it's four different units. They are providing garages, one-car garage for each.
They are providing garages, one-car garage for each, as well as an additional parking spot for each. There were 23 mailouts and zero written opposition for this case. There was a citizen that came to Planning and Zoning and voiced his opposition. At this point, I believe he's here, as well as some additional citizens.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody on item number eight?
Mayor Pro Temp, commissioners?
If you could please state your name for the record, sir, please.
Paulo Gonzalez.
Your name and address?
5287 Richline Drive. Somehow I'm not the spokesman, because I was not the only one here. Before I start, that's a good idea on this first date, time-like maneuver-
Thank you.
Slash CPR.
Thank you.
I retired 30 years from AT&amp;T, and we used to go through that every year. And I hope that you all do it more than once.
Yes. Thank you.
I bought my property in the early 80s, and I built, I was the second home built there in the whole subdivision, back in 1988. I have the property owners that were the first ones, and I have some neighbors that are within 400 feet from there. We've gone through more than any neighborhood should go through. And let me tell you a little bit of history. We were county. When we bought, back then, the developer did not have to let us know of the ordinances because we were county. I think that has changed. So, a year and a half later, we found out the first duplex was built. Three years later, we got an X, and our property taxes went 110%. So, we've gone through several changes, and sometimes, you know, they change, every time there's changes in a neighborhood, there's, the dynamics change. But, you know, back in the mid-'90s and back in the year mid-'2000s, I retired in 2001, I tried to sell the property twice. First time, I both listed it for six months. First time, the best offer I got was 73 cents on the dollar. In the middle 2000s, my wife and I, we tried to downsize, all the kids had left the nest. And guess what? I didn't get a single offer. Why? Because I'm sure that the people came by and looked at the area. So many neighborhoods that don't have duplexes across the street. I didn't have any takers. That was with a duplex. Not with a multi-apartment thing, you know, nailing the coffin here. Now, and on top of that, you see, they're trying to get, and I understand, I mean, they're investors, more income out of the same square footage as a duplex. Now, they claim that they are going to have parking, I don't know where, because there's not enough for four apartments, and they should have two spaces, parking within the premises. The builder, in the other, in the zoning meeting, he said that the other folk were going to be on the street. So, if you put cars on both sides of the street, you know, only, only one, traffic would be going only one way, and then have to wait for the other, and then we have school buses coming through there. I live on, I didn't show there, within the 200-feet area of the proposed application. And I know that they showed that there was, there's some, four apartments at the corner of Richline and Alton Door. But the reason that they got approved is because there were no single-family dwellings between the 200 feet. Now they are. Now, the whole subdivision, Richline, it should have been all single-dwelling family lots. But somehow, you know, because we were county, we found out too late. So, we've gone to three tax increases since then. See, our properties, they don't create income. So, we're stuck. You know, I feel, you know, I believe if you enter price and whatever, but the builder is not going to be leaving across the street like I am. And I'm sure that anybody here would be, in this predicament, would be standing in this podium. So, we ask you to take all of this into consideration because we've gone already to too many changes. And we have been here since the 80s. We've been taken, taken to the city after the third year there, and here comes someone that just bought the property recently, is not the original owner, and wants to change rules. Hopefully, you'll find our side or our story and take it into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on action, on action item number eight? This is a public hearing.
Señores, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Genaro Mercado, presidente de Brown. Vivo en el área del Alton Door. Yo también les voy a decir mi historia. Me vine de México, con una carrera universitaria. Vine a invertir, a trabajar. Y gracias a ello, me he dedicado a la construcción. Y he cumplido con los requisitos que me ha, que me han, pues dicho que cumple. Gracias a las partes que, a los directores, sobre todo el departamento de, de beauty. Me saco los permisos y todo. Han estado mejorando, les aplaudo. Constantemente ha habido cambios. Qué bueno que haya gente emprendedora como ustedes. Que lo que queremos es de que Brownville también se supere, se embellezca, que haya más dinero. No, no podemos quedar nada más con, pues con los brazos cruzados. Y la razón por la que les digo esto, antes de comprar una propiedad, en la que estamos hablando de la Richline, que es el Lot número seis del bloque, o revés, Lot número diez del bloque número seis. Yo fui a preguntar al departamento de zoning, qué cuáles eran los requisitos y qué es lo que podía, si podía hacer algunos departamentos. En este caso, me dijeron que estaba zonificado como para duplex, y pregunté cuáles eran los requisitos para poder cumplir con los departamentos. Me dijeron que tenía que ser la, cambiar la zonificación a uso específico. Gracias al apoyo que me dieron ahí el departamento y el arquitecto, entre el arquitecto, la persona que el departamento, la señorita Ana Martín, que fueron los que estuvimos trabajando entre el arquitecto, ellos y yo, para poder cumplir con todos los requisitos para que se hiciera posible esto, embellecer la calle. Y la razón por la que, si ustedes ven de cómo están los departamentos ubicados, los que yo quiero hacer, el frente no lo hice para la calle Norte. Tomando en cuenta que la Richline es un poco más de tráfico, cosa que no lo voy a usar porque en la parte de atrás de los departamentos que yo voy a hacer, que quiero hacer, hice, estoy proponiendo hacer la calle para que haya acceso a entrar a los departamentos que me exigen dos, el garaje es un carro para estacionarse, y otro estacionamiento aparte, dejando libremente la calle que yo propongo hacer, y lo está proponiendo en el plano, sin tener que usar las dos calles, solamente para transitar y salir. ¿Por dónde? Por la calle Richline. ¿Y cuál es la razón por la que hice de esa manera? Porque al frente de mi propiedad es comercial, y para no quitarle, porque la calle es muy angosta, o no quitarle yo espacio para que pueda haber el fluidez en el cuestión de tráfico. Esa es la razón por la que estoy aquí, pidiéndoles a ustedes. Es algo una inversión, es más dinero para la ciudad, es más dinero para mí, es más dinero para todos, y sobre todo, tomando en cuenta que voy a poner los jardines, tomando en cuenta de la manera que lo voy a hacer, y tomando en cuenta de que todo esto está basado a las ordenanzas que estoy cumpliendo con lo que me está pidiendo la ciudad. Si me permiten decirles de los departamentos que están ahí, mi respeto para las propiedades que están existentes a cómo se ven. Y yo no sé si tengan el plano de cómo, cómo, cómo se va a ver para que, en la cuestión de la fachada, y todo lo que es verde para que se vean lo que es los jardines. Entonces, esa es la, esa es la forma que, lo que quiero hacer. No sé si hay alguna pregunta por parte de ustedes para poderles contestar, y perdón, el inglés no entiendo poco, lo sé muy poco, pero, y me podía expresar mejor en español. Perdón por el idioma.
We're not, we can close public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Muchas gracias.
I'm sorry.
If recommending to approve, we ask that you apply the condition that the property must comply with all city codes and regulations as determined through the site plan review process.
We're not starting, we're waiting.
Yeah, point of order, I mean, subject to, I don't like that word because that means that we can approve anything subject to whatever. That, that's what I'm getting from subject to, because that's what it means. So, we approve it, but then it goes back and subject to, they can change anything, so it could be denied?
Well, we're, we're looking forward to meet building code standards. As it is right now, our main point of concern is the distance required from the intersection, since this is a corner lot, the distance required before an entrance is 36 feet. That is not marked on the site plan, which is why we're asking for this condition. We're, we're just asking that it meets all, all the different building conditions that-
What's the, what's the length between on Elizabeth that entrance to the HEB?
I'm afraid I don't know.
It's right here, I mean. Does it comply with those 36? Yeah, that's, but it, it goes the same thing that, I mean, it's-
Should we let this lady speak?
If you could just state your name for the record, ma'am, and your address.
Señores, soy, muy buenas tardes.
Nombre y dirección, por favor.
Okay. Yo soy María G. Hernández, y mi dirección mía, domicilio es 1581 Los Ávalos. Es la primera vez en toda mi vida, así como dice señor, yo también soy de México, vine a invertir aquí. Yo, en esta sección de ahí, yo soy dueña de seis duplex. Cuando yo compré en el 90, compré uno de los terrenos sobre de la Richline in Newfield, a mí no me permitieron ni me autorizaron a hacer departamentos quadruplex, ni mucho menos de dos pisos. Yo tuve que hacer duplex. Más adelante compró, años más adelante compró el 5215 Newfield, y sucedió lo mismo. No me autorizaron a hacer ningún cambio. Tenía que ser por ley duplex. Él está en una esquina, ese, ese terreno está en una, en una esquina, bueno, la mitad de ahí es mío, y tengo un duplex. Y yo cumplo con los requisitos que me pide la ciudad de tener tantos pies de la orilla de la calle a donde empieza el duplex, a donde empieza el driveway. Entonces, yo no estoy de acuerdo en, en esta edificación. Toda la manzana son duplex. Toda la manzana son duplex. Esto sería lo único diferente que haría ahí. No estamos en contra de que él construya. Él puede hacer sus duplex, duplex. Porque a mí sí me exigieron en aquellos tiempos que yo tenía que hacer duplex, y no me permitieron hacer esto que el señor está haciendo ahorita, o que quiere hacer en el futuro. Pero yo tengo seis propiedades en esa manzana. Es todo. Gracias. Buenas tardes.
Tú, tú apelaste también, como él está haciendo, cuando tú pidió de hacer más que los duplexes, tú también apeló.
In aquellos años.
No, en aquellos años no, porque como ya estaban todos muchos duplex edificados, entonces mi esposo y yo, lógicamente, como inversionistas, pensamos, bueno, tenemos que acatarnos a lo que dicen todos, todos ellos, y seguir la línea, y seguir el régimen sobre de todo lo demás, y no quedar como algo diferente con todo lo que ya está verificado. Okay? Alguna otra? Gracias.
Gracias. Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody else on item number eight?
Want to close public hearing?
Is there, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. This is an action item. Is there a motion to approve?
Does this have to be unanimous? Yes.
Tonight it does, yeah.
There was no opposition from the people within 200 feet?
Not a written opposition, although the first gentleman was within the 200-foot radius.
And, and he appeared at the Planning and Zoning Commission as well to express his objection?
Correct.
It meets everything.
Did you receive, can I ask, did you receive the notice?
We have more than the 200 feet here.
Did you receive the notice?
Hey, pardon?
Did you receive a notice?
I did. Maybe not because they're beyond the 200 feet. They're all within, have a block.
We want to maybe address that 200-foot radius thing in the near future and expand it out. There's been a couple other controversial, I guess, rezoning issues that have come up. So, I think we're going to look into that, to let you know about that. But your, in your package, it says that y'all support the, the change, or the, that specific use.
Yes. We felt that it, it met the building requirements, and again, we want it noted that this is not a process to circumvent building standards. It's just to allow different uses that aren't allowed in the current zoning, but we don't want to spot zone.
But it met all of our guidelines, correct?
Yes, it, it did meet the comprehensive and future land use plan.
What was the Planning and zoning's reasoning for denying it?
Their reasoning was apartments should not be allowed in an existing single-family and duplex neighborhood. This neighborhood is almost completely built out. There's only about three different vacant lots right now. Although this portion of the neighborhood is mostly duplexes, but toward the west, it is much more single-family oriented.
That's my concern, because that's almost the words. And I really like the design on this one, and I really like that they're spacious, they're big apartments, but connecting all of them makes it an apartment complex, kind of, no?
Well, having more than, three or more dwelling units- Well, having more than, three or more dwelling units on a lot makes it an apartment.
Makes it an apartment in the middle of a neighborhood that is residential. That's my, if I lived there, I wouldn't like to see that. That's my reservation, which makes me nervous because it's unanimous count.
There's duplexes, is that correct? Duplexes all the way around?
Yes, there are duplexes around it. Duplexes are allowed in residential zoning as long it meets area district requirements. This area is Zone G, so it only has to be six thousand square feet.
Across the street, it's vacant?
Correct.
And what's that zone for?
Commercial.
Is that commercial?
It is zone dwelling currently.
Thought they said it was commercial.
It says "commercial" on your...
That belongs to IDN D, they have a retail out there. So they have two lots facing the open door.
And that's an allowed use in dwelling.
That's allowed use, but it means that it's not going to be developed, basically.
Want to close public hearing?
There is a motion.
We had already closed it.
He's already closed, sorry. I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. I guess I'm going to have to take a vote by roll call, given that it has to be unanimous. So we'll start off with Commissioner Niese.
Aye.
Commissioner Mungia.
Yay.
Commissioner Longo.
Aye.
Commissioner Tachon.
Aye.
Aye. So the five votes, the ayes have it, motion carries.
Next, we have a... Public hearing number nine, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-080 to rezone from Apartment Neff to Apartment H for Lot Number Two, Block Number One, Hudson Subdivision, located near Lourdes Boulevard.
This case was also denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 4th. They're currently zoned Apartment F and they're looking for Apartment H. And again, this will require a unanimous vote tonight. Here is the zoning map. As you can see, here is Fourteenth and here is the Ruben Antores and this property is at the entrance of a single-family subdivision. This is part of the linkage corridor and subregional node in our future land use plan. The linkage corridor is primarily commercial and institutional uses. Residential uses should have a density of six dwellings per acre. The subregional node is a balance of commercial and residential land uses so that neither category is more prominent than the other. Residential uses should have an average density of nine dwelling units per acre and consist mostly of attached townhomes and apartments. Here is the aerial, as a little grounding, right here is Garcia Middle School. Okay? To the north, to the west and to the east are single-family dwellings. Also, there is Garcia to the west and commercial businesses. To the south, there is commercial businesses and industrial businesses. Into the east, there are commercial businesses and industrial businesses. Here is the two-hundred-foot radius map with all the public notices. And again, they did receive public notices for the rezoning, for the January 4th meeting and for the appeal tonight. There were zero written opposition and twenty-seven mailouts, also no citizens spoke against it at the P&amp;Z meeting. Staff did support this and we did ask for a conditional overlay for a landscape screen between the apartment and the single-family subdivision to the north. Just to clarify as well, with the current zoning, they could allow up to four units. With this proposed zoning, they could have up to twelve.
I'm sorry, what was the last thing you said I didn't understand?
This zoning will change from allowing four units, up to four units, to allowing up to twelve units. It also reduces the side and rear setbacks slightly.
Do you know if they're going to do four or are they going to do twelve? Or that's until after the fact, right?
Right. Since it's a rezoning, we don't receive a site plan, only for the specific use. Now, they still, even though they could fit up to twelve, they would still have to comply with all parking requirements, landscaping requirements and all other requirements.
Do you want to speak?
This is a public hearing?
Good evening, again. I have more handouts for you.
You came prepared.
Just to recap, currently there are four units allowed here based on our zoning of Zone F. We're asking to be changed to Zone H, which allows us four extra units. So these are going to be duplexes, since we're on the hot topic of duplexes. And if you look at Exhibit A demonstrates, you know, the breakdown of how many units were allowed. We are jumping from Zone H, I'm sorry, Zone F to Zone H, which seems like a big jump, but what we're asking for is eight units and there's no other way to get to that number without jumping over Zone G. And again, some of the diagrams that's up there right now is not exactly representative of what the area is like. If you look at Exhibit B, our property is right next to a Burger King and then backs up to a Family Dollar and a Dollar Tree. Across the street are where you have some residential houses, but all of those people were noticed. All, one, two, three, four, five, six houses were noticed and nobody came forward. So, the Planning and Zoning staff reviewed all of this and they came to the conclusion that the commercial business is the predominant existing lane use in that area, not necessarily residential. And that's found in their staff report. It also found that to build eight units is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future use plan. They recommended that this pass the Planning and Zoning Board. Frankly, I'm not sure why it didn't. The P&amp;Z staff didn't have anything negative or any opposition at all to this.
P&amp;Z, you mean the Planning Department?
The Planning Department.
Planning Department.
Right, the board obviously voted against. If you look at Exhibit C, you'll see where our property is located. It's the one with the X on there that I've marked for your... If you turn off of Fourteenth Street onto Lourdes Boulevard, on the left, you're going to pass a Burger King and then there's an electric substation. It's not actually a house, it's a utility substation of some sort. And then you've got our property. And again, you're only passing by one, two, you know, five houses. So, any increased traffic in the area, which I think was one of the questions posed by the Planning and Zoning Board, was it's really only going to affect the beginning of that subdivision, if at all. And then you've got property that backs up on two sides to commercial businesses. So I find it hard to believe that a single-family residence would fit well there. The other issue that I believe came up was, especially in the last one, the issue of duplexes. On Exhibits D and E, you'll see that it is going to be a two-bedroom duplex and it's two-story. And to remedy that issue of any increased traffic, my client has provided for two parking spaces per unit. And he's actually gone back, he's going to revise the plan and add even more parking so that there's at least three spaces per unit, so there won't be any parking on the street. They're going to have no parking signs, so you don't have to worry about that. And if you look at the actual picture of what the building will look like, Exhibit F, you can see that almost looks like a single-family residence. So, at this point, you know, I just need to reiterate that nobody has opposed this, none of the residents. The P&amp;Z staff has suggested that this be approved and then we're only really asking for four additional units, which in the scheme of things is, you know, eight additional bedrooms. If you fit, what you could fit on this are four single-family houses if you had, you know, a five-thousand-square-foot lot. If you put four single-family houses and each have four bedrooms, well, you've got sixteen rooms then. That's exactly what we're asking for. So it's the same thing in a different format. Are there any questions from the commissioners?
This one flagged because it had too many units, is that correct?
Yes, the Planning and Zoning Commission were concerned with the high density in an area that is essentially the entrance to a single-family subdivision.
Again, I'd like to reiterate that it's bordered on two sides by commercial businesses. So somebody is going to be living next to a Burger King and their backyard is going to be a Dollar General. I don't think that a residential use would be, a single-family residential would be necessarily the best use.
Well, it's currently zone apartment, so they could put in four units without coming here today. It's for the additional units that were here for this appeal.
I don't... And again, I hate to be the tiebreaker because this is my district and those are, I have a lot of friends in those homes and those neighborhoods, in that neighborhood. And because of the location with the Burger King and all of that, I understand the use for it, but I don't like the crowding. That, I just, I don't like that. I don't think that you should be building homes like that in our city limits. We've worked really hard to stop, and that, it's the wrong word, slumlord, because it's clearly not a slum, but I don't like the cramming of rooms and the lifestyles people have to live in, teeny-tiny homes like that. Sorry.
You've never been to China?
This is not China, this is Brownsville, Texas, and it's beautiful here.
Commissioner, if I may speak to that. I understand the issue of living in a residential area, a single-family and yet you want it all to be cohesive. There are several other areas of Brownsville where this is happening. I think it's pretty prevalent that we're building a lot more multifamilies. These specifically look like single families, which I think is a better use, you know, a better way of going about it, if you will. And in the additional extra, one way or another, there are going to be duplexes on there. All we're really asking for is one extra set of duplexes. And if you look at the site plan, you know, there is plenty of space between all of them, there's green space, there's, you know, foliage within the parking, I mean, they've gone above and beyond to make sure that it looks pleasing to the eye for the people that are across the street. So I'd ask that you consider that, if possible.
I don't know, because I don't like the crowding. I don't know if the commissioner would want to table it because I just, I love the design. I think that that's the right use between the sandwiched Burger King and Family Dollar, but I don't like breaking our building code. I'm not okay with that.
This is the owner and the end of...
If you could just state your name and address, please.
My name is Fernando Seines and my address is West Belfort, I mean, nineteen-four-hundred Belfort and that's in Richmond, Texas. I'm originally from here, from Brownsville, but I'm living in the Houston area right now, trying to get back to town. It's been a while since we've been out. I've been out for sixteen years trying to, you know, raise a family. So I, you know, I think, we think that it's time to get back and start our business. So, what I wanted to say about that, I see that your concern about crowded, you know, in reality, I could build four apartments right now, right? I'm proposing two bedrooms, so for small, small families or, you know, young professionals, something like that, right? But in reality, I could build like three or four-bedroom units, which would make it the same as building eight. You see what I'm saying? That's kind of the point here. I mean, there's plenty, there's plenty of room. It's half an acre. And that's my, I guess, the point here that I'm trying to make. You know, if I build four, it could be the same, the same number of rooms as the one that I'm proposing, which is only two-bedroom apartments.
I think it's important to note that there's really no legal justification for denying this other than perhaps a personal opinion or a personal opinion as to what should or shouldn't be there because this is happening in other areas and it's actually just been approved previously in this body. So I would reiterate that this follows all the guidelines and the Planning and Zoning has already suggested that this be approved.
Well, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on behalf? We're against action item number ten.
Want to close public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, saying none.
Does it have to be unanimous?
Yes.
Would approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion, a second. All those for say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
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 Then, motion. Well, having two and two, even if I break the tie, it has to be unanimous. So I guess the motion fails?
Motion fails?
Well, even if I vote it, it doesn't matter which way I vote because it still would have to be unanimous. So, I mean, if there's a tie vote, it's just, it doesn't carry. Action, action item number ten.
Public hearing number ten, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-901 to rezone from Dwelling A to General Retail G for an estimated 2.47 acres out of the rear portion of Block Thirty-Seven of Acacia Lake Garden Subdivision located at 2865 Southmost Boulevard.
First, this is not an appealed case. This went to the most recent Planning and Zoning Commission meeting last week. So this is a city-initiated rezoning case for an estimated 2.47 acres. It's the rear portion of this lot. It's currently zoned Dwelling A. We're suggesting that it be rezoned to Fourth Commercial G to match the front portion of the lot. Southmost Road was rezoned in city-initiated cases in 2016 during which it split this property. As you'll see in a moment in the aerial map, it is currently developed. This is part of the future, of the Core East District and the Town Corridor in the future land use plan. The Core East District is primarily residential with large amount of community facilities. The residential uses should have an average density of three dwelling units per acre. The Town Corridor is also primarily residential with small clusters of commercial land uses and the residential uses should have a density of three dwellings per acre. Here in the aerial, you can see this is a plaza that currently exists. This front portion where the parking lot is, is currently zoned Fourth Commercial. Along Southmost to the east and to the west is commercial businesses. There are more commercial businesses to the south. There are also single-family dwellings to the north, south, east and west, and some apartments to the north and to the east. Here is the two-hundred-foot radius map showing who was, received a public notice for the rezoning case. There were forty-five mailouts and zero written opposition in this case and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from Dwelling A to General Retail G.
This is a public hearing, is there anybody on this action item?
Close.
Is there a second? Motion to close, and is, is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, seeing none. A public hearing is now closed, this is an action item.
Would approve?
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay, seeing none, uh, motion carries.
Thank you.
Number 11?
Next, we have public hearing number 11. Public hearing in action on ordinance number 2018-1638, amending Chapter 308 floods of the code of ordinances by repealing the existing, existing Chapter 308 floods and replacing it with a new Chapter 308, flood damage and prevention and dealing with related matters.
Good evening, Honorable, um, I'm sorry, excuse me. Honorable Mayor Potem and City Commission. So, for this ordinance, the city is required.
We can hear you.
Yeah? The city is required, I'm sorry, it keeps going back.
Michael, doesn't that thing move?
Yeah. Uh, the city is required to adopt flood plain management regulations in conformance with the National, well, paragraph 60.3E of the National Flood Insurance Program. The deadline to adopt these regulations is February 16th, which is something that is coming up. There are minimum standards and do not supersede any state or local requirements. And just to provide a summary of the proposed changes that are included in this ordinance, uh, this ordinance is based on a flood plain management model ordinance that was provided by FEMA, and we're using that as a rubric, or the basis for this ordinance. It incorporates two major changes, uh, one, to update regulations for coastal high-hazard areas, which is language that is missing in our current, um, in our current ordinance. And two, it adopts the latest available flood insurance study for Cameron County and the latest flood insurance rate maps. Uh, these maps are used to identify, or for identifying areas of special flood hazard, and preliminary maps were made available for comment in 2015. We are hoping, uh, that this ordinance can be approved unanimously tonight, so that it passes as an emergency measure, and, and that way we can avoid consequences of non-compliance for the city. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I just want to remind the Commission that in some occasions such as this, for emergency ordinances, we don't have to bring it back for a second reading, it can actually be approved on the day it's introduced, provided that it contains the unanimous adoption by, by the Commission.
Now, did you consult with, I guess, planning? I, I really don't know what this does, it's a pretty long ordinance, I don't know what it amends or creates.
What it, what it does is, it, it establishes certain standards as, as required by the federal government for flood mitigation, um, plans and mitigation efforts, I suppose. And we have to adopt this in order to enable our citizens to buy flood insurance.
And Commissioner, I would like to add, the reason it is brought to you this late was because of an employee who just didn't take care of it, and we handled that as well. And that's, that's the reason we brought you, so we do apologize that it was, came in this late in time, but it was something that was caught after the fact.
But it, we can vote on it tonight. Is this a public hearing? Is it a public hearing?
Am we close, public hearing?
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Yeah, I'll move to adopt it. There is a motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Action item 11 is adopted or passed. Uh, item number 12, public comment.
Uh, Commissioners, we did not have anyone sign up for the public comment period. Items for individual consideration, action item number 13, consideration in action on a memorandum of understanding between the City of Brownsville and the United States Fish and Wildlife Services, establishing a partnership through the Urban Refuge Program to further the promotion of outdoor recreation, environmental stewardship, and active lifestyles.
Uh, Mayor Potem, Commissioners, uh, thank you for having us. Uh, I'm gonna introduce, uh, Hysella Chapa, who is, uh, Urban Refuge Manager. Uh, she manages this program for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and she'll just give you kind of a quick synopsis of what it is, that their mission is, and what it is that we're trying to accomplish, uh, through this partnership.
Hi, good evening. Okay, there you go. So, again, to introduce myself, my name is Hysella Chapa, and I am the Coordinator for Community Engagement and Partnership for the South Texas Refuge Complex. Just to give you an overview of, of the place that I work in, um, the South Texas Refuge Complex is composed of three refuges that can be found here in South Texas. One of them is Santa Ana National Wildlife Refuge, which is where I am located. Uh, the LRGV National Wildlife Refuge, which is basically everything that you see on the screen, that's green, and the Laguna de Costa National Wildlife Refuge. These refuges were established in the area for several reasons, primarily for the protection of migratory birds by protecting vital habitat, um, protection of threatened and endangered species in the, that live in the area, the preservation of a unique ecosystem that can only be found, um, in our region in the United States, and also to provide recreational opportunities that are consistent with our mission. So, just to give you a visual of why these refuges were established, to begin with, what you see right here is Santa Ana National Wildlife Refuge, and this is an aerial, a satellite image, demonstrating the vegetation coverage, um, in our landscape. So, everything that you see as dark red, like Santa Ana National Wildlife Refuge, that is habitat for wildlife. A lot of what you see around the area that's kind of tan or gray, those are areas where the habitat has been altered or depleted. And this little squeakly line that you see along here is the Rio Grande. So, recreational opportunities are important. Refuges have been historically known to be supported by people that enjoy activities like hunting, fishing, wildlife observation, hiking. But at the turn of the 21st century, there was an issue that affected our whole nation, which is the disconnection from nature. Um, and that is something that we have the opportunity to address under the Urban Wildlife Conservation Program, which was established by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to try to engage, um, non-traditional audiences, and by that I mean members of our community that are not necessarily engaged in outdoor recreational opportunities or activities. Um, and so, as a result, our youth are now disconnected from nature and perhaps might not understand the benefits and the value that, um, green spaces like a National Wildlife Refuge can present to them. Um, and so, this is why the, um, I am here, just so that we can foster innovative partnerships that can allow us to provide that opportunity to the members of our community. And more specifically, to the residents of Brownsville by, um, improving access to national wildlife refuges that are located within Cameron County, um, enhancing existing green spaces within the city with native habitat, um, engaging youth and families to spend more times outdoors and perhaps have more active life, lifestyles, and fostering diverse partnerships that can also help promote sustainability and stewardship. And of course, the potential benefits of a partnership are, um, actions and activities that can help promote the quality of life, uh, from the residents in the, um, in the city of Brownsville, increase the availability of native habitat that is beneficial for wildlife, as well as to the residents of the community, and also be within the city limits, help promote ecotourism opportunities in our region, um, foster stewardship within our community, and foster the preservation of our unique ecosystem. And so, in our area, we've been working with community engagement in the partnership program since 2014, and some of the examples of partnerships that we've established since then is, um, the creating schoolyard habitats, or mini refuges within a school district, which is the PSJA ISD. And this is also another example of where kids are engaged in creating habitat in areas that they spend basically most of their lives in, right now, especially going to school. Um, most recently, we expanded to four other school districts that are also creating schoolyard habitats, and this is an example of Donna ISD. And we also have other ongoing partnerships, these are the other school districts that are also engaged in creating mini refuges, or what we're calling learning landscapes. Um, we have an existing partnership with the City of Alamo to cost-share a position, and this park ranger works within the City of Alamo part-time to help promote, um, youth programs, ecotourism, uh, things of that nature, but also work at the refuge to be the face, um, welcoming the community into a refuge. We have a partnership with McCalla Nature Center that helped them restore habitat within that area. Um, and one of the other projects is, uh, in collaboration with the National Butterfly Center, in which they allowed for plants that we could later use to, um, create monarch waste stations or habitat for monarchs within city, um, limits. And this is also an example in which we're trying to promote accessibility to Santa Ana National Wildlife Refuge, and a potential to do the same in Cameron County, um, and the refuges in the, in this area. And ultimately, we want to create a connected conservation constituency, so that the members of our community are aware, or become aware, of the benefits that they can have by visiting green spaces like refuges. And, do y'all have any questions?
I would like to invite you to participate in our annual Earth Fest, uh, April 21st, and if you are interested, then I would encourage Ramito to set up a meeting so we can, uh, talk about that.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
So, is this a public hearing? Or is the?
No.
So, then I would, I would make a motion to enter into this partnership, uh, on number 13.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, seeing none, I guess, uh, the, it was a motion to close public hearing? Thank you, partner.
Thank you. Look forward to this partnership.
Thank you. Next, we have action item number 14. Consideration in action on the extension of the fiscal year 2017 Sports Park Main's Operations Agreement between the City of Brownsville and Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation.
Mayor Potem, Commissioners, uh, just asking for the extension till September 30th for this, as the BCIC continues to do an exploratory commission to see if they wanna, uh, how the operation's gonna proceed, I'd just like to do it, make it September 30th with the option that we can remove the contract anytime from now on then.
Yeah, I believe the BCIC is also in favor of it as well, so, I would, I would move to approve it.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, seeing none, action item number 14 passes.
Action item number 15, consideration in action to execute a license agreement between the City of Brownsville and Orego Works Properties.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Potem, Commissioners. Uh, the purpose of this item is to approve an agreement between the City of Brownsville and Orego Works, authorizing the use of a portion of a historic battlefield trail right-of-way for parking. Orego Works has committed to install amenities such as landscaping, lighting, benches, and free parking for the users of the trail. Staff recommends approval.
Let me ask you, sir.
Yes.
I'm looking at this license agreement, so basically, we own most of that, so there are, are they asking us to move our trail?
Well, actually, they're.
Well, they're gonna move it.
They'll, they'll move it, yes.
They are gonna move it, but, uh, it says that, provision number four says, any, any failure refusal to maintain, uh, will terminate the license agreement, then what happens? So, now it's, hey, here you go, Brownsville.
Or reverse back, I mean, it's.
We still have to maintain it, right? What would we maintain, what would we acquire, the parking lots?
The parking spaces, yes, and, and the landscaping, and, uh.
So, basically, they're gonna do it five years, and then after that, hey, here you go, City of Brownsville, you figure it out, you maintain it. That's basically what this contract is.
No, that's sadly, Commissioner, uh, it would, if, if they would revert back, it would be a parking spots that we'd potentially use for access to the trail.
For the trail itself.
But again, it's, it's, you're exactly right, by giving that up, that proportion up, there potentially that could happen. We hope that the partnerships did not go that route, but.
And, and that's really what I'm, I, I'm, I'm actually for this, I actually, uh, Mr. Lert at one point actually told me about the project, I'm concerned about the actual agreement, and what I, I mean, I think it's a great project, what I'm trying to say is, I just want the city to be protected, not today, not tomorrow, but 20 years from now, when we're not here and they ask us, well, now, I mean, does it revert back? And that's really my concern, it's like, how do we make it in such a way where we both keep our side of the bargain, and we actually maintain? 'Cause that part of the trail gets really bad.
Yeah.
It like floods on the other side, and I think it's right behind Chuck's gun shop and by the ocean.
Good evening, Mayor Potem and Councilman. I think to answer your questions is, right now, uh, we're, you know, we're developing the old Edelsteins warehouse, trying to, trying to figure out how to revitalize and get closer to downtown to Brownsville, and come up with kind of a, new ideas, new tricks, because really, our major issue in developing downtown is parking. So, here it's a, we saw it as a win-win for the city and a win-win for us, 'cause we wanna invest in, you know, this is kind of our backyard right here, and it's pretty bad, I mean, from this point on, further north, uh, there's graffiti, there's, there's a lot of stuff that, you know, it's not nice there. So, we're willing to invest and develop, uh, a parking, which the city will benefit from, all the hike and bike trails, the parking will, will resolve, on our end, it will resolve the issues of, of, uh, the ponding, mosquitoes being back there, so we're gonna clean it all up. If that's not our expectation, our expectation is for this to be a successful project and to, kind of, we're already working with the next kind of owner of, of, uh, that's next to us, that wants to also redevelop, and, and so forth, so we, we hope that this will be a spark in kind of the redevelopment of that section of the trail. Uh, but if for some reason something happens, the city benefits from having a great parking, uh, great lighting, um, I don't think you'd have any more maintenance than what you already do, oh, actually, I take it back, there's really nice maintenance in that part of the trail, except now, we're gonna be investing in landscaping, there'll be lighting, uh, it'll be an area where people can come and park there when they wanna go biking or running, and, and so, um, we wanna, you know, any concerns that you might have, I mean, we can address it, but we're not here to, to be out of, out of there in, in a few years if.
Are you gonna work on both sides of the trail, or just the side by the building, your building?
Well, just the side by the building, what we're doing, that, that parking area, the other, the area, the other area is, uh, the other buildings, uh, I think it's an alley for the other buildings also.
But that's what you're talking about, the flooding occurs on the other side?
Yes, it occurs on the, well, it occurs kind of both sides, but it's mostly.
So, on, on our side, we would fix that problem, I mean, we wouldn't have that problem.
Well, we'd want it to be worse on the other side after you fix your side.
Yeah, you see, that's, that's my fear, I, I don't wanna say it that way, but now it's like, well, you, you can't fool water, you see, that's one of the interesting thing about nature, I mean, it has to go somewhere. So, if it's not going to this side, it's going to that side, so the question is, I just wanna make sure that we don't flood the neighbors, right?
No, no, well, well, that's part of, uh, going for permanent stuff, that you can't, you can't do that anyway, you can't throw water, so wherever, whatever we need to address for our area, we're gonna drain that. Uh, if, if later on, uh, the, the other kind of people on the other side of the street want to, we can work with them to do something, but, uh, we're gonna be dealing with what we're kind of developing, there won't be any more issues with that.
You'll be responsible for your runoff?
Exactly.
Commissioner, do you want the legal department to take a look and perhaps tighten up some of the language to address your concerns? I'm not sure what the timeline on this is, but we can certainly do that.
I don't, the, if, as long as, I mean, really, the main concern is one, well, uh, the maintenance will, very low maintenance, we're gonna take care of it, second issue, I think, is the runoff water, if that's gonna be addressed, I mean, that's really the second concern, so.
They didn't consult us on its runoff, that's why we have a problem. So, I mean, it's like, you know, now it's a local, not that we're returning it, but it's just like turning it the other way.
So, and that's one of the reasons why we wanna fix that in the back, because if we're investing in there, and right now it's accessible for mosquitoes and so forth, and at least, we wanna do our part in fixing that, and, and so, uh, and whatever other concerns, I, I know, uh, Councilman Gowen is not here, and she wanted to get input into the, how, how to redo the hike and bike trail to, to make an example for down the line, and we're willing to kind of work with that. to kind of work with that, because...
Yeah, we'll also make sure that they take care of everything that needs to be taken care of in terms of construction.
Ms. Bassin, did you see anything in the agreement that concerned you?
What concerns me is that you're raising issues that are going to arise potentially after the license agreement is terminated or finishes. And so I don't know if you want certain language or certain responsibilities to survive the language agreement itself.
It seems like their certificates of occupancy will be yanked if they don't follow through. Number five, is that your understanding?
That is correct. The certificates of occupancy will be tied to them keeping ownership or maintaining this, these parking spaces. Without that, that wouldn't meet the minimum parking requirement, so pretty much, for their use of the building, they will have to maintain. And pretty much, for anybody else that wants to come into that building and utilize it, they would have to maintain the appropriate parking.
But the language says failure to provide, it doesn't say maintain.
Failure to provide appropriate parking will yank the sales. So they wouldn't have appropriate parking to operate the building.
The devil, I mean, just says, after it reverts to us and we put parking meters there, but that's not... That's just me. Find a way to put that to make...
Oh, my gosh.
Well, the city's going to, I mean, benefit from a huge investment from us already. And...
But ultimately, just to add, it's the building codes that will govern that property. And these parking spots are required to get the certificate for this building. So if anybody moves or leaves out or anything like that behind it, they would need those parking spots in order to make that building comply. So I think it's really hard for the applicant to say, hey, we're not going to maintain it, because then we can go as a city and remove that whole operation, so...
That's a beautiful renovation.
I'll move to approve it.
Second. Well, there's a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed say nay. Well, seeing none, the ayes have it. Action item 15 carries. Item number 16.
Thank you.
Action item number 16. Consideration and action to acknowledge the financial statements and cash investment report for the City of Brownsville for the first quarter ended December 31st, 2017.
Good evening, Honorable Protem and City Commissioners. Part of your packet that was given to you in financial, you had a financial statements, financial report, which includes summary financial statements. Also included was a presentation, summary presentation. We have made a few adjustments to the presentation, I'll go over them real quick right now. You have the unofficial unedited financial statements for the first quarter, December 31st, 2017. These are some topics that we'll be covering on financial highlights. Some of the financial highlights that are indicated in green is the Veterans Bridge is doing fine. We have a 4.8 increase over the same period over last year. PUB utility expenditures are lower, about 80% lower from this fiscal year, from last fiscal year. Unemployment rate remains low. PUB cash transfer to the city has increased compared to last year's number by $13,000 or 0.54%. Sales tax is a caution, this is indicated there's a caution, because even though there's a slight increase, it's an anomaly increase of 0.86%, but it is below, 1.7% below budget amounts. Tax levies also the caution item, levy's percentage is slightly lower than last year. Some of the highlights that are indicated in yellow is building permits, values decreased by 49%. I will explain that a little bit more in the next few other slides coming down. And the hotel motel tax are down compared to last fiscal year by 22,000 or 12.23%. This is a general fund summary. The bar graph on the left, you have a total budget, 105 million of that through December 31st, 37.1... 37.189%, excuse me, 1,000 has been expended. On the right-hand side, you have your expenditures, total budget, 110 million, spent through December 31st, $26 million. Sales tax, information that I just went over, the actual year-to-date increase is 0.86%, but there is a decrease compared to the budget. This is a sales tax revenue on here. This schedule is presented in millions on here. Through December, you have 6.7 million collected. Bridge, Veterans Bridge schedule, it's up 4.8% at $29,962. This is a bar graph of the Veterans Bridge cash payments from the county from fiscal year 2008 to 2018. This is the activity on the bridge crossings in Lumsum, and this is broken down into the various categories of automobile, commercial, and miscellaneous. Building permits indicated before, indicated, building permits from 2012 to 2017 have pretty much remained steady. One of the items of concern against the month of December, it's a little bit low. If on this schedule, the two items that are lower than is the apartment complexes, you'll see here, there's a decrease in the valuation of apartment complexes. Last quarter, last fiscal year quarter, there was a apartment complex, a rather large apartment complex, that accounted for about $14 million valuation. And then the other category that's down is also commercial additions, also down by 4.4 million dollars. Total permit value decreases, just a value decrease, $19 million. As you can see, there's still activity, but the valuations are lower than the last quarter, last fiscal year quarter. PUB transfers, history on there. Unemployment rate, history, again, it remains steady, about 7.8, 7.4% through calendar year 2017. For the actual employment rate for December, December was only 6.1%. General fund balance, general fund balance, the total assets composed, the receivables, cash, prepaid, inventory, and due from other funds, total of 54,660,000. Current liabilities is 30,787,000. Fund balance, broken down into the assigned, unassigned, committed, restricted, and non-spendable of 40,673,000. The estimated fund balance, this is just a summary, you start off with your beginning fund balance of 21.8 million dollars. You have your budget expenditures, you reduce it by your budget, excuse me, increase it by your revenue, budget revenues, decrease it by your expenditures, you have an estimated fund balance of about $18 million at year-end. Right here, you have a bar graph of all the revenues, the city, different revenues the city has. You have a comparison indicated in blue, which is fiscal year 27 actuals to December 31st through same period, and fiscal year 2018 is indicated in red. And, you know, towards the bottom of the section gives you a percentage increase and decrease. One of the items to note there is license and permits. It's down about 19%. That's represented by the permits, decrease in the permits. Another line item on there is fines and forfeiture, that's due to municipal court fines, a slight decrease on there. Same schedule, this is for expenditures given out, broken down by the different functions, general government, public safety, public works. Again, towards the bottom, you have a percentage increase, your general government, there is, those are the increases of 4.4% attributed to salary payouts. Public safety increase relates to collateral, excuse me, they had a 2% increase, this started in October. Other funds, this, these other funds, we have also Convention Tourism Fund, we also beginning fund balance, you add your revenues, decrease your expenditures indicated, you have an ending fund balance of 426,000. Community Development Fund is a grant fund, towards the end, the revenues will equal expenditures on here. Landfield Fund, revenues almost are about the same as expenditures, total estimated fund balance, 1.8 million dollars. General non-bonded debt, you'll have an ending fund balance of $7,142. Non-bonded debt, this is a fund that we use to accumulate funds in order to pay off the debts at debt service payments. Again, towards the end, as it's December 31st, we'll have about $12.2 million. Airport Fund, you have revenues about equal expenditures, you'll still have an estimated net position, 40 million, 4 million dollars. Bridge Fund, you have a beginning net position of 2.8 million dollars, you have increasing revenues, no expenditures, expenditures are related to transfers out to the general fund. You have an ending net position as of December 31st of 3.3 million dollars. Motor Vehicle Parking System, again, you have beginning fund balance, you have revenues of 140,000, expenditures 118, gives you an estimated net position of 820,000. Brownsville Call Center, similar format, you have revenues of 102, expenditures 166. Now, this fund provides a subsidy from the general fund, which will come into play next quarter. You have estimated net position of 1.6 million dollars. Public Transit, this is total operating expenditures, this is in thousands, so this operating expenditures, 1,298,000. Broken down, the broken down is the general fund revenues, charges for services, rentals, FTA portions, and state contributions. This is capital and planning grants, again, 639,000 of that percentage of how much is attributed to each of the different funding sources indicated in that donut. Analysis of the Medical Insurance Fund, period end is December 31st, you have expenditures of 2.8 million dollars. Total revenues or contributions, excuse me, receipts or contributions, 3.6. You have receipts over expenditures, which is a positive. And for last, you have the last investment report, towards the top, it gives you the breakdown of the interest-bearing certificate deposit, public investment pools, and obligations of the government. On the paragraph there, you see public funds, investment pools, you have 34%. Certificate of deposit, 22%. Interest-bearing accounts, 42%. Weighted average maturity of 59.29%. Allowable per investment is 270 days. Weighted average yield earned in these investments, 1.77%. And compared that to a three-month Treasury bill, is 1.34%. Concludes the presentation. You have any questions?
Thank you.
What is knowledge of report? There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Thank you.
Report is acknowledged. Thank you.
Next, we have action item number 17. Consideration and action to accept a community development block grant in the amount of $90,000 for the purchase of two flood-swiff water rescue boat packages.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. We're requesting acceptance of a community development block grant in the amount of $90,000 to purchase two boat packages. They will be able to basically enhance our abilities to evacuate people in case of floods or rescue any people in swift water. They have dual capabilities with dive platforms and any type of large evacuation, will be able to accommodate probably about 24 people at a time.
When will those boats arrive?
They, we're looking at an estimated time once we purchase, about 45 days.
So they'll be here for hurricane season?
So they will be here for hurricane season. Basically, it's two boats on one trailer. They are compatible with Texas Task Force One's boats, they're called connector boats. So basically, we can have one operator control two boats at one time to do any type of mass evacuations or land bridges if needed. Our match for this grant will be to basically make sure everyone has the proper training, make sure we have the Coast Guard compliance, and to purchase any of the equipment needed for this floodwater, swiftwater rescue.
Motion to approve?
May I open up a McDavid chief?
There is a motion on the floor, is there a second? There's a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you, chief.
Next, we have action item number 18. Consideration and action in supporting the application to the InVision Center Demonstration Project and commitment with a participating nonprofit and the Housing Authority of the City of Brownsville to accelerate economic mobility of low-income households that include HUD-assisted housing and building upon existing efforts with the Buena Vida Choice Neighborhood Initiative.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and City Commissioners. We're here tonight to respectfully request your consideration and action to support the application to the U.S. Housing and Urban Development's InVision Center Demonstration Project. With me is Ms. Carla Mancha, Executive Director for the Housing Authority for the City of Brownsville. And from the Revival of Cultural Arts Roca, more commonly known as the Carlotta K. Petrina Cultural Center, are Mr. Alejandro Cruz, Administrator and Music Director, and Mr. Roman Gonzalez, Assistant Administrator and Arts Director. HUD's goal is to identify a sample of diverse communities from across the nation to implement the InVision Center Demonstration to serve HUD-assisted families. InVision Centers are centralized hubs, and their supportive services are focused on four different pillars, which include economic empowerment, designed to improve the economic sustainability of individuals residing in HUD-assisted housing; educational advancement, designed to bring educational opportunities in non-traditional ways and platforms; health and wellness, designed to improve access to health outcomes of low-income individuals and families; and character and leadership, which is designed to enable all low-income individuals and families to reach their full potential through participation and volunteer and mentoring opportunities. One of the requirements for the communities that are interested in participating in the demonstration is a formal announcement of commitment by the mayor, the public housing authority, and the nonprofit. Communities interested should already be participating in federal-based initiatives, which the City of Brownsville already is, and continues to participate in those initiatives. And by participating, we will build upon what is already in place and would complement the Buena Vida Choice Neighborhood efforts. So with that, I'll invite Ms. Carla Mancha to go over this in more detail.
Can I just move to approve this?
Yes. There is a motion to approve, is there a...
Second.
A second? There's a motion, a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Seeing none, the ayes have it, motion passes.
I have so much respect for you guys for sitting through our entire meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you likewise for supporting us.
Action item 19?
Next, we have action item number 19. Consideration and action to accept National Fitness Campaign Grant, $10,000 and paid grant match of $75,000, does not exceed an additional $5,000 for shipping and packing for a total of $80,000.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Protem, City Commissioner. I had a little lovely link that is going to demonstrate what this is, but it's a smart fitness site to go in at Montebella Park through our action, not our action plan, our master plan process. That was one of the areas that needed some additional services. So we were awarded this grant. It was a small grant, but it was funds that we were already going to invest, so it just reduced the cost for us. And it's a great partnership campaign that we can get into on a national level. It has a smart app, and you can hook into it. And then we have a lot of activity at Montebella. It's a natural pristine area, so we have a lot of races that go out there, so it's a great way for fitness training to happen for our community. So we have a lot that have gone in all around in the southern area of the city, but this will help with our northern area.
Yeah, this is something that caught my eye.
Yeah.
At the beginning, I was like, why would I want to give you 75,000? But this was money that you were already allocated, and I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes.
This is money that we're already allocated for this project, and it helped bring in 10,000 more.
Yes.
Okay.
This is an action item. There is a motion on the floor.
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Seeing none, action item carries. Is there a motion for adjournment?
We'll adjourn.
Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Wow, 9 o'clock.